All the meetings order at six thirty, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please. Present.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Present. First item we have on the agenda for the community to hold is the approval of the April twenty sixth, twenty twenty-three minutes. As presented, do I have a motion? Motion, trusty Peterson. Any discussion? Not roll call, please. I.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, motion carries. Alright, well, first is the mayoral report. And why many of you are here in this room tonight. As you may have heard, tonight is the last meeting for trustee Dominiac as a sitting trustee. So again, we want to take some time to recognize her service to the community and allow her to give some of her heartfelt wishes to the rest of the board as she's outgoing in the future of the village. So just a couple of things that I wanted to highlight as a background. For Mary, who if you're not familiar, Mary has been a trustee from two thousand eleven to two thousand twenty-three. She facilitated, had up several key initiatives in the village. Was a partner in formulating the village's vision and served on the Visioning Committee. She was the chairperson or the lead trustee in drafting the village comprehensive plan, which is the document that is basically the guide or floor plan for the village for the next twenty, fifty, hundred years. Helped create the village's economic development committee. Worked with the Economic Development Committee on advocating for the purchase of the Pittman property, or whatever you want to call it at this point, by the village. Worked with the staff on the drafting of a new zoning ordinance, which is in place today. But many of the buildings on Main Street you've seen have looked much better over the last ten years. And she was involved in creating the village's facade design guideline and program. Led the village's downtown economic outreach efforts with village downtown business owners and continues to do that today. Led the efforts in the creation of the downtown beautification committee and had up many of the downtown beautification projects. And as many of you know, follow her Facebook, advocated for working small businesses and the shop, the incentive. She's been a champion of the local businesses. And that's why she presented her gift later. We would not buy something for Amazon. We made sure it was from a local store. But again, I think that Mary can leave tonight. I'm sure it's a bittersweet day to be sitting up here for the last time. And I think she'll speak for herself, but I think as public servants and people who are basically volunteers in this capacity and doing what's best for the constituents is to leave the village and the town itself a better place than which she found it. And so I think that if you looked at the business community and Main Street in particular, and many of the other village initiatives, Mary can step down tonight knowing that she accomplished. And what I would hope is our number one goal is public officials. So with that, I don't want to talk too much. Open the floor to any other trustees that would like to say anything. Otherwise, open the floor to trustee Dominiac to address the audience. Alright, I see the bearing of the gifts here. So village clerk, one of your village clerks, since she is our resident internal shopper, why don't you tell her what
I think that that was a compilation of gifts from local stores in Antioch, so there was a lot of help from local business owners that you know personally and putting
Thank you. Really wonderful. Ben, I am that.
So without further ado, why don't we open the floor and the floor is yours, trustee Dominiac.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Gardner. You call trustees. This is my last chance to speak for more than three minutes. So you start the clock to see how well I do, but I'm not stopping after three minutes. And then want to begin by saying what an honor and privilege it has been to serve the residents for the past twelve years. It's hard to believe that it's already over twelve years since I sat and former trustee Jay Joswiak's kitchen and he said, why don't you run? And I said, okay. Here I am twelve years later. There are so many people to thank. And you know, when you go to an award show, there's always, you know, at the end, it's like, oh, my husband or oh, my wife. So I'm going to flip that and say that the first person I want to thank is my husband Ed. He is the best thing in my life. And he exemplified the marriage founder for good times and bad, better of course, as he's journeying with me over these past twelve years. So thank you. Secondly, I want to thank the residents of Antioch for voting me in several times and being supportive of me, even if you didn't always agree with me. To my family and friends, many who are here tonight, I couldn't have done this without your support. And I want to make special note of the women in this community that I've gotten to know who have invested so heavily in our downtown. And I see many of them here, Laura and Heather and Steve and Tammy and Tina and Jane. And that doesn't mean that I don't appreciate and happy to watch them grow. I have to thank past trustees and former Larry Hanson, George Sakis, who I'm so glad I got to know because told me the key to his Greek house under the mat for me when I go there. Dennis Crosby, who's now a grandpa, Jake Joswiak, who I now am going to serve with the Antioch Veterans Memorial. Ted Bullis is also now grandma, grandpa twice. Jerry Johnson, who's dead, and Daniel, who's really great. So they were part of this dream. Along with former mayor Larry someone who helped guide me through getting into politics. So I thank you for that. To my fellow current trustees, as well as to those in the past and to those who have served our missions. Although all of us have certainly not agreed on everything, we came together to get the job done for the residents of this town and the people we represent. I'm proud of my service, all five of you, and of all the things that has been accomplished over the past years. For Mayor Gardner, you will never break the time record that I made when I sat in your chair, and I'm glad you're there. And Rebecca, you need to be very thankful of Mayor Hanson because my first meeting, my mother sat through two and a half hours of budget. So should be very grateful to to the village staff while without peer, I mean, police, the best to keep us safe. Public work, sacrificing personal time for us, sharing one bathroom. I can't wait to come to that meeting or that grand opening. Finance for collecting the dollars and paying the bills and keeping us physically sound. Legal for guiding and advising us. Parks and Rec for all the fun events we have in town. Marketing for helping others to learn about and appreciate what Antioch has to offer. IT for helping us keep cyber secure and and community development while growing our tax base, creating a comprehensive plan, coming up with all sorts of creative ways to build the business and commercial community here in Antioch. And primarily also listening to my complaints about signbook violations. And I have a list of signs. And then front office, I mean, these smart, talented, dedicated women who work so hard and are the pieces of Antioch. Dealing with problems with patience and respect. I really admire them. Lori, the village clerk, I don't know how to keep organizations under control. Always know what I hope and fall you. And all of this under the leadership of who brings such value to us as a not only a village administrator, the boss, the chairman. As I reflected over the past twelve years, I thought about what I am most proud of, and Mayor Gardner, you certainly addressed many of those, so I won't be repetitive, but you know, leading the village to create a strategic plan for budget decisions, asking questions, always asking questions. And being part of a team that navigated the pandemic. And I'm proud of that because we came up with creative solutions as a team to make sure that our businesses stay. And I don't think anybody closed during that time. So we should all be very grateful for their willingness to ride that tide and also feel good about the fact that we Now, in terms of my hopes, after Lake Michigan Water, then Antioch continues to be the best place in Northern Illinois to live, work, play, shop, and enjoy life. Finally, welcome to Rebecca. I'm excited for you because you will be working with a great board. I'm going to stay to see the new board sworn in, but then I'm going to leave to celebrate with my husband and some friends. Because there's no way I can sit out in the audience and not ask a question. So that's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, and again, thank you for your service. Right, so that I will take a motion.
So.
Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Bluthart, roll call, please.
I.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
I So if you're being sworn in, you can try to pull your easy out. Just the basic.
I gotta stand up.
You're first on the list, so.
I'm the first from the start.
Alright.
First judge, can we just go to you and I just say I do.
Call the meeting back to order at six fifty. First item on this agenda now is the installation of the newly affected elected officials and hold of office. We have the honor of Judge Ortiz, who's also an Antioch resident, swearing in trustee Maisick and trustee McNeil. And we have village clerk Lori Romine swearing in trustee Peterson. So with that being said, we will start with swearing in of trustee Edward Maisick.
Anyone? Make sure you're loud. Good evening. Good evening. Thanks, Mr. Russell. And trustee Maisick, are you ready to be hopeful of office? This time, let me ask you to raise your hand. Yeah, you say your name. Say your name and ready after. You silently swear. Silence swear. Having been elected and trustee for the village of Antioch, having been on the trusty board and and I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the state of Illinois, the Constitution of the state of Illinois. And that I will faithfully discharge, faithfully discharge, and you, these others trustee. And these trustee, to the best of my ability, the best of my所能, so help me God, so help me God, and graduation. And Rebecca McNeil, please come forward. But if I may just take a moment to say a couple of words to the fans. Rebecca is maybe wonderful, joining village board now, been elected. And that you have chosen to follow that path of public service and parents. For so many years, they served our schools, community, so diligent, meaning wonderfully. And we love this village and it's been a compliment to everybody in this. At this time, I'd be asking to raise your hand. State your name.
Rebecca McNeil.
Yeah, you. I'm Rebecca McNeil.
I'm Rebecca McNeil.
And we're very lucky trustee of the village is here.
I'm very lucky trustee of the village is here.
To sound be swear.
Please sound be swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
You then faithfully discharge. As you, these are village trustee. To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge.
I, Mary J. Peterson. Having been elected as trustee of the vote of Antioch. And you found me a place. Who silently swear. That I'll support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the state of Illinois. And I will faithfully discharge. The duties of village trustee. Do the best of my
Thank you. And again, I appreciate everybody coming to the swearing in. There will be refreshments. If you are going to stick around, the meeting will be quick. I've talked to the new board and all of our meetings are going to be this light hearted and happy. So going forward. That's going to be, that's, that's the, it's going to be. Alright, so first item on the agenda is we need a new roll call here.
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 Present.
Here.
Present.
Present. So we have all the trustees present, so we have people that signed up for citizens wishing to address the board. Okay. Okay, so we have a very busy month of May for acknowledgement. So I would like to acknowledge the following days that happened before this month or before the next meeting. One is, first is Mental Health Awareness Day, Motorcycle Awareness Month, Foster Parent Appreciation Month, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, Jewish Heritage Month, Police Week, Gulan Dafa Week, National Public Works Week, Municipal Clerks Week, Teacher Appreciation Week, International Nurses Day, and do not forget that Sunday is Mother's Day, most important. Okay, so first item on the agenda is we have the consent agenda. We have two items. Is there any request to remove either of those items in the consent agenda? Alright, otherwise I entertain a motion and a second. Motion trustee Peterson. Second trustee Pierce, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Here.
I. Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Onto the regular agenda. First item of business is consideration and approval of accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of four hundred and four thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. Do I have a motion and a second? Go move. Motion trustee, our second trustee Peterson. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 I. Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Next item and last item on the regular business is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing and ratifying the execution of an agreement by between Flock Group Inc. and the village of Antioch for the use of Flock system technology. Resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-eight, I have a motion trustee Maisick, second trustee Pierce. Any discussion regarding this item? Alright, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 I. Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. A little bit different this time around. We do have, for those of you who are new to this, it's a little different agenda. We're going to do department reports as part of the end of our meetings. So each, we're going to rotate department heads. Half are going to do the first meeting, half are going to do the second meeting. The administrator, the village clerk, and trustees get to make a report every meeting, but that's part of our, what we discuss at the quarterly meeting. So first is village administrator report, administrator Kat.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few items. Mayor and I attended a breakfast for the, it was called a big event for Lake County Partners. Very nice event. Highlighted all the accomplishments of building square footage and creating jobs in Lake County. And we continue to be membership with the county partners and hopefully they can help us find some businesses and jobs for our community. I have a really exciting video. I'm going to spare you, but it's a machine tearing out floor of a clarifier. So see me after the meeting if you want to see a little cool video of a machine. So that work progresses. It's, it's going fairly well. About half of the concrete floor has been removed. No big surprises so far. We successfully got the site to water, so construction commence. In a little trouble with the permanent watering system and finding good spots for wells to extract water. So that investigation continues. We had a meeting with our architects and we think we're very close to having some. We've seen a rendering of a floor plan now and made comments on it and moved this office here and that group here. And so we're hoping we're only a few weeks away from being able to share with the village board some some floor plans and the conceptual new building for the village hall. And hopefully Public Works will be part of it. We had a meeting with incoming trustee McNeil. Me and Lori sat down for, well, we kind of invaded your time a little bit that morning and we're going to schedule another one, but we had a very good meeting. As you all have gone through, you went through the binder and tried to get them to understand what you're doing here and look forward to our next. Started the road program engineering today, but I just want the board to know we went through the Woods of Antioch, rather engineers into the Woods of Antioch to take a look at the concrete streets. They should have started bouncing ideas around for how we may approach. Repairs. The good news is there's a lot that can salvage. It does not, in my opinion, need to be a tear out and replace. We think there's gonna be some methods where we do some certainly some patching and crack sealing and. You know, maybe some under under drains in areas. Water is the real culprit moving around those concrete panels. So. We've begun a process to come up with something to incorporate for future budgets and capital. How we can just address the condition of those problems. If there's anything else you have questions on, please feel free to. Ask me now, send me an email or.
Any questions? Alright, thank you. Next, we have the village clerk. Alright, thank you. Any trustee reports? Anyone over here and everything they wanna add? Trustee Pierce.
First of all, I wanted to congratulate trustee McNeil. I want to congratulate her. I will. Ask the board. They should take a look at the town Two Rivers website. They I drove through there this last week and they give them a picture version of what we're going to. That. And it's kind of interesting to see. Two Rivers. Yeah, it's kind of interesting to see. Their their layout. So other than that, I did drive my bike through town the other day and I was surprised at the condition of a lot of the streets that they're. Seen the going through these days, especially. So good job. That's it. Thank you. Any other trustee reports?
Just a comment. So for the meeting, I could make. And half the board was at the board meeting. So you get an update to half the board. Half the board was there. Friday. What? They have to work.
Yeah, so we will.
Whatever was discussed on Friday or half the board.
Well, yeah, there was. Well, we did have a. We did have a core initiative.
I I get that. I get that.
We'll circulate the minutes. Alright, any other reports? Alright, so here's the new. Here's a new way of business. So first is. Community Developments Director Mike Birkin is for.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to provide a village board a very brief update. We continue to work with Marketplace Properties, you know, ground LLC. That's a eighty two acre of Marso. Seventy three. We are working with a major developer. Propose seventy acre site there. The actual developer also has a master plan. Staff has has not have not specified up for opportunity to do that master plan. They're working with I dot right now on full access determination brown road. So we are seeing some progress on the marketplace. In addition, we had there'd be this thing with Mr. Portis. Mr. Portis owns property over there at the northeastern corner. Deep Lake Road and one seventy three. Based on discussions that we anticipate some potential development there. So. Staff is very confident. We'll potentially see some potential commercial development on Rock one sixty three. Interest this year based on our discussions. With regards to residential permits, we had a twenty five permits actually issued last week. If you haven't had a chance about to Clublands, Clublands newest phase three A. There's a new ranch neighborhood. So there's extensive activity. So we continue to see a really strong market for residential, even with the interest rates being what they are right now. Now some of that product is rental, but nevertheless, we're still continue to see a really upgrading of Clublands, which is very positive. With regards to downtown, we're working with currently the owner of nine one nine Main Street that used to be the embroidery shop that that building was purchased. A couple of months ago by the owner embroidery shop vacated and relocated their business. We are working currently with a potentially a new business on there. So again, we were confident we'll see a new tenant in that building. And hopefully type of use that would be very exciting for downtown. In addition, we're working currently on two new facade grants. Another in North. I came in with a major new. Program, which I think is gonna be very exciting and the board will be very supportive of that. So I anticipate bringing that to the board for the next meeting. Be a major, a major new investment by that current owner. In addition, we're currently working with. Potentially the owner of nine one nine Main Street embroidery shop to bring that building back to its historic appearance. So we're seeing and also talk to Masonic Lodge. While not only improving the back of their building for facade, but also restoring the windows facing Festival Station fifty one. So we anticipate a lot of interest in our facade program this year. And with that, I'm gonna conclude my summary. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Next, we have Police Chief Gachow.
Thank you. You might have got out of my multi-tab written report, but I have about twenty five minutes with prepared remarks here. We're working on a current ordinance revision for park hours. I just want to make the board aware. Currently, our ordinance states that our hours close at ten P M. I'm sure you're all aware that over the last several years, we've had several. Critical feedback from many of our residents and stakeholders talking about. Problems with kids after dark, particularly damaging some of the property. Tipping over outhouses littering in the wetlands and then continued problems in Williams Park. So we're working on a revision to close our parks at ten P M, six A M to ten P M. Village wide, the new ordinance that you're coming before you will have a caveat that the village has a right to extend park hours. Particularly if there's special events taking place for the billion rentals that you do accommodate that. Also allows the village to set special park hours to the park across the street. For example, I anticipate that's probably gonna have some unique operating hours, maybe different seasonally. So the village will be able to update that just by simply having a show that posting two hours. To look up in our staffing, as you know, the P D is like like every other police department in the country is continuing to struggle with staffing and recruitment. I'm glad to say there are five entry level hires that we brought on last year have graduated the academy at the end of April. Totally outperform very well. Graduating with an A or B plus average for all five. And they've all entered their field training, which is gonna take about fourteen weeks. So there is some light at the end of the tunnel for our staffing. Unfortunately, I think we're in for pretty busy summer. So. As you know, the in the recent budget, the board did approve the upgrading of. All our officers body armor to a higher ballistic rating package. So we have scheduled fitting for all of our officers to see that new armor. In in the end of May. And this will come with a rifle rated plate. Much safer. And so hope that by midsummer, all of our officers have improved protection. Supply chains have been a little bit difficult sometimes, but we're told that those are starting to bite a little bit. So we're hoping by by July to have that armor placed. And we have begun our entry level testing. So just so you're aware, the the written exam for entry level police recruit is gonna take place on June twenty fourth. We've been advertising and recruiting pretty heavily on our Facebook page and LinkedIn, some other other media sources trying to get the word out. Typically, there's a forty five hour application through the most departments pay or sorry charge as part of the. Standard and associates package, however, with the support of those administrators, budgetary support. Been able to arrange to waive that fee hopes of giving us a little bit of a competitive advantage against other departments here that are charging. That forty five dollars fee, hope that will drive up our numbers. As regards to what we have for current openings right now, we do have a current vacancy that was created by the recent retirement of Sergeant Bartowski. That will need to be filled. We'll have a second vacancy coming up. Beginning of mid-June, I'm sorry, with Officer Hertus, because he's made the decision to leave law enforcement after after twenty. It was twenty six years for him. And he transitions into his new opportunity with the Illinois or this is the council rep. Little little update on our opioid initiative. As you know, at the end of twenty twenty two, this is code for six triple zero two. Scored the second highest incidence rate for opioid related overdose and overdose death of Lake County. At that time, it was very alarming to us. I'm sure it was to you. We also know and all have assault on the problem, what we titled is our hometown response to a national epidemic. The strategies you were included in a multifaceted approach, including community awareness, education and first of its kind program in Lake County. Where we partner with the cost of deployment interventionists, the hotspots in our community, was the mass distribution of free R T M. Ready to go along with it. Not only the office in our village, but had been approached by several businesses and entities from the unincorporated area. And we made a decision after talking about it since opioid related overdose death doesn't know any boundaries or activities to try to save lives. So I would say that we have partnered with some organizations outside the village. Some of the some of taverns outside the village have asked us to have provided context for them to get training on three doses for their staff. So some facilities tend to have a little bit higher. Proud to say that as the new data comes out this year, the first report that came out end of March. With our strategy, I think it is key to this. Antioch is no longer even listed in the top ten track. So we've gone from number two within the county to making this something that shows Joe some of the progress that we've made and we're really proud of that. And then lastly, we have our top on a rooftop coming up on May nineteenth. Sporting special in the Woodpicks, Illinois. Hope to see it the day out is five and twelve P M. With your support, we hope to be one of the top fundraisers in the state as we got. Let's see if any questions that I might report.
Just see Pierce.
Back to the park hours. You mentioned that you're staying until ten P M or you're gonna cut.
I'm sorry, I may may have missed. We're cutting them to dusk.
The dusk.
Yes, they are currently open till ten. There are some that have posted hours otherwise. It's a little mishmash of hours. So we're just trying to consolidate those great consistency throughout the village, except those parts. And I hadn't worked out yet.
Any other questions? I thank you for informative. Thank you. Last, the most exciting I T always. Amy, who is our I T director, so you may not. Know her, so.
Forgive me, I prefer to stay behind the scenes. So I am working the pool. Technology should be up and running by the end of this week so that staff can be trained next week. Electric and conduit is being completed at the North Pavilion at Williams Park for additional cameras being placed there. And we just signed a proposal today to expand and upgrade the metro cars as well.
Thank you. Any questions? Alright, any question? Thank you. I think that's. Very well. So if everybody here is satisfied, I've entertained a motion. We adjourn. Alright, motion, Steve McNeil, second trustee Peterson, roll call, please.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
You gotta get used to your number.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned to seven thirteen.